We are back. Thank you for waiting while we reset the YouTube programming and the audio equipment. It has to be reset every four hours. My apologies to those who have been waiting very long. Thank you for your patience. We're trying to get testimonies and questions answered, but we might have to forego the questions as to get the rest of the testimonies, and we will try to contact all of you for further questions. All right. So the next panel, Mr. Setref Lisangan, Dr. Beeling, Dr. Lombard, Dr. Lisa Natividat, Rosario Perez of Ihauganfamalawan, Dr. Akoma, Dr. Mary Hernandez, I think Dr. Sarah Clegg. Okay, I'm going to repeat that. Rosario Perez of Ihauganfamalawan, oh, Julian Duñez, Dr. Beeling, Dr. Lombard, Dr. Akoma, Setref Lisangan, Dr. Lisa Natividat, Dr. Mary Hernandez. Did I call all of you? Yes, right?
Deborah Sweeney.
Say it again?
Deborah Sweeney.
I'm Dr. Deborah Sweeney.
Can you, Charissa, can you please get her name? And okay, and the next one, can you please identify yourself, ma'am? Sergeant of Arms, can you have her identify herself? Can you please identify yourself?
I'm Dr. Mary Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm one of the pediatricians here at Guam.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing the names. If we could just fix the mics, yeah. If the staff, can you please get the names of the last two on the panel?
I'm Dr. Deborah Sweeney.
I'm Dr. Deborah Sweeney.
Okay, and?
I'm Dr. Mary Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm one of the pediatricians at Guam Memorial Hospital and Department of Public Health.
I'm Dahlia Sappalo, an oncology nurse navigator and patient advocate.
Okay, and is that, is that you, Dr. Song?
Thank you. Yes. Good evening. My name is Karen Song. I'm a pharmacist.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to be, begin with Julian Duñez and then Mr. Lisangan.
To Honorable Speaker Therese Terlahey and the co-sponsors of Bill 112-36, I am here before you today to request that you put a hold on Bill 112-36. I am Jolene Duñez, born and raised on Guam. I returned home in 1991 to serve my community as a healthcare professional, as a physical therapist. I have seen many of you in the community, and I chose not to speak to you about this bill, basically because I value the sanctity of church and the sanctity of your dinners, right? And, and I, I think honestly, I felt like it wouldn't probably affect me. I have malpractice insurance. But after reading through the bill, there were several highlights that got my attention. And it got my attention because I placed the word, I replaced the word defendant with my name, Jolene Duñez. This opened my eyes to how much more vulnerable I am as a licensed healthcare professional. I just want to make a couple points this evening. Two of them are professional and one is personal. I'd like first to address the stated intent of Bill 112-36. The intent is stated to find fair and balanced solutions for all parties involved. And I ask you, how can this be fair when the stakeholders, such as physical therapists, were not afforded a part in the development of this piece of legislation? So this is my statement. This bill is not fair. To have the fate of my career ultimately placed in the hands of one person, a magistrate judge with no medical training, this judge alone is to determine if I, Jolene Duñez, failed to meet the standards of care in my community. Maybe you can say it would be the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners that licensed me. That board in itself has over 10 different disciplines. I am going to be judged by a veterinarian, a speech and language pathologist, a dietitian, an occupational therapist, a clinical psychologist, a licensed family marriage therapist, and on and on and on and on. And so then the other point is the small claims court. Now, I don't know how this works, but it sounds to me like I can be taken to small claims court without any screening or arbitration. And this makes me quite, feel quite vulnerable. But on a more personal note, it's been beaten like a dead horse. You all know that our healthcare system on island is limited, and I've really heard chatter, not just today, amongst physicians that said that they would limit their risk by not taking on patients that they weren't trained for, or that their malpractice insurance didn't cover them for. And by our standards on Guam, they really may be the most qualified to take on cases that otherwise may need specialty care, and these clients can't afford to go on off-island, or basically, they may just be stuck here. This brings me back to the memories of my late brother, Tom Dufuntin Tomas, and his physical crisis. My brother was diagnosed with lymphoma. His cancer treatment was available on island, and we chose to stay here. He had both chemo and radiation. During the course of his medical crisis, he had a bleeding ulcer. And after multiple blood transfusions, they needed to do something to resolve this because we couldn't deplete the blood bank at the hospital. I remember one surgeon saying to me, you know, I can clauderize that. I know how to stop that bleeding. But I just don't know if I could close him because of the location of the tumor. And then there was the radiology interventionist. And he said, I think we can go through the femoral artery, and I think we can do, I don't even know what it is, and I'm a medical professional, some coil and some stent, and put foam and clog the artery. But we won't really know until we get there, and we don't even have the supplies. So they scrambled. I mean, this, my brother was bleeding to death in front of our eyes. And we only wanted maybe one more hour until my older brother came home, so he could say his goodbye while he was still cognizant. All we wanted was one more hour. They found the supplies, I think they borrowed from Naval or Dr. Berg, I don't even remember, and the radiology interventionist was able to give us, I think, a couple months. The risk that these two providers were willing to take was beyond the standard of care. And I'm afraid that if this passes, because of all the chatter and the narrative that's going on right now, that this will break the spirit of our medical community, and that our providers would not want to do over and beyond and risk their lives and their children's lives and the lives of their, their staff. I want to grow older on this island. And if my medical crisis, or my family's medical crisis shall arise, I want to have the insurance that the providers will do what it takes to keep us safe without fear of going out beyond their scope. And I'm not saying that the medical current malpractice arbitration law is not without flaws. We all have a responsibility, both you and I as, as being members in this community. I'm just saying that this bill, as it's written, seems to make the burden of risk heavier on the providers. It places the burdens on the families and the insurance agencies to seek off-island care. And so I ask to hold on, to take time to listen to us as health, as a healthcare community, to help us to make it better, to allow us to be a larger part of this legislation. Please listen to us. You have our attention. You have our ears, and we're hoping that we have your ears. Let's work together to find a fair and balanced solution. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Julian. Mr. Lisangan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, good evening to all of you. I admire your energy and appreciate your patience on listening to all of us. Pardon my complaint, Madam Speaker, but I came here 4:30. I thought I even came earlier than some of the first bots, but I don't know why I was scheduled last. And then they told me I need to pre-register. I pre-recorded yesterday. They only told me that I need to pre-register earlier. I should have done that since last month. Pardon my complaint, Madam Speaker, but it's, it's not right. The usual protocol is first come, first served. That's why I always come here early. And then I'll be staying here for five hours. I'm not ready for that. If you only told me five hours, I should have bring my sandwiches and my beverages. Anyway, that's just something that, that needs to be improved.
Thank you, Mr. Lisangan. I just want to state that there were a lot of people who, who had registered before you, and that's what my staff is telling me. So we're trying our best to get everybody in, and I know it's been long, so I apologize. Thank you.
My point, Madam Speaker, some were pre-registered on the 12, but they were cold pers before me. That's the concern. You know, and they should tell us that it would take like three hours so we can go home, some of us. Anyway, yeah, I'll try my best to, because I already lost my focus. I will start with, in order for me to, to make a compelling arguments, I have to attack the proposed bill. The head, the head of your bill, the head of your bill is your legislative statement. The reason why you're proposing this, in simple words, they cannot afford the arbitration cost. Because the amount, just the fee alone, is $10,000. But they forgot to indicate that the $10,000 will be shared by both, by both parties, by the doctor and the claimants. Now, we all know that $5,000 is a lot of money, and many people cannot afford that. My point is, where is the data? The data, the complainants, how many? So we can figure out the amount that we need to invest on helping these people to seek justice, if it's really a valid complaint. We need to have the data. So if we know, if we need 1 million, 2 million, that's peanuts. We can just appropriate it. We can navigate, you can navigate. You know, we spent so many millions of dollars to some areas that is not needed. Why, why not invest on this justice for these people that don't have the money, that don't have the means? It's not right that they cannot seek, seek justice because they don't have money. But prior to that, we need to understand, you need screening first. What is the screening? You let the Guam licensed medical board to do some investigation, to screen the claim, if it's, so that the claimant have a better understanding of what really happens. Then they'll figure it out. They'll be given the opportunity to provide all their testimony. And then, after the findings, they can still pursue arbitration, if it is valid or not. Now, you know, in the arbitration cost, you pay for the lawyer's fee, you pay for the witnesses, for the mileage. And just like what you said, it could accumulate to $50,000. Of course, there's so many people that does not have that money. I will not do that. If the arbitration fee is $5,000, even me, I will not pay that $5,000. Now, I will attack the goal of your legislation. The goal of your legislation is to prevent the filing in court of action against healthcare providers for liability, and to make fair and impartial the proceeding of such claims that are or reasonably may be well-funded. You're talking about fair and impartial. How it could be fair and impartial if you know that Guam is only a small island, with a small, close community that everybody almost knows each other, that the judges are appointed by the, by politically, and jury can be corrupted too, especially with this kind of money that they are claiming? But the point I'm trying to bring here is this. Are they sure that they're going to win? How about if the doctor got the connection? How about if the doctor got the, does that have the liability, and the judge rule it according to the evidence? The evidence is weak. There's a weak medical negligence on part of the doctor. So what happened now? He will, he lost the case, and then he has to pay for the lawyer's fee of the other party, for the cost of the trial. It doesn't mean that he's going to win 100%, because according to data, in the US, 80% to 90% by jury trial was dismissed because of low medical negligence. 70% on the borderline cases was dismissed. Only 50% that has a strong medical negligence won, only 50%. Because science, medical, is a complicated thing that, just like the vaccine. They told us to be vaccinated, but they're not giving us that guarantee that we cannot still catch COVID. That's science. Now, yes, you are, you're applying pre-trial screening for the magistrate judge to oversee it. And then you even indicate here, findings of fact and decision made by Guam Health licensing boards on the same subject of the complaint may be considered by the magistrate judge. But there's no mechanism on how to carry out the job of the licensing board. And then you put the language, maybe, they're still under the mercy of the magistrate judge. They're still under the mercy, because all of that will be discarded. And then you, you care for the poor, for the sick, but in the definition of the healthcare provider, you, you expanded it, that including poor people, including the barber, the, the cosmetology workers, the ones doing your nails, your hair, those workers working in the laboratory, even the assistant. How could they, you know, how could they provide also the, those arbitration fees? The bottom line here, the, the point to solve this problem is get the data. Get the data, if there's any. How many? I heard, I read that there's 1,800 petitions, became 4,000 petitions. How many of them have an issue with malpractice? How many of them cannot seek justice because they don't have money? They'll compute it. That's, even one person, you know, cannot be ignored if he has complained. And we need, you need to help him seek legal aid. But there are 4,000 petitions. But remember, 4,000 petitions out of 165,000 people, you know, will carry the burden of not being treated because of, most of the doctors here are not specialists, and they're performing over their, over the scope of their expertise, of their job. And then they'll be repairing it off-island instead of being treated, and then the disease will get worse, or they might die. You know, that's why in 27 states, majority in the mainland has arbitration. You say 23, but what is the majority? There's 50 states, 27. And besides, there's millions of people. That's why the justice there, the jury there is more justified. Now, you indicate in your section 10106 that they can also go through arbitration and mediation. To me, this bill lacks integrity, no dignity. You know, if you are pushing for legislation, for litigation, go for it. You don't have to say, you're waving your proposal. Why are you going to wait to arbitration? You already know it's expensive. And then you want to go to the Guam International Arbitration Act, which is more stringent and more expensive. I read the law. It's more complicated than the malpractice arbitration law of Guam, because it is close to the international arbitration, and they'll be spending more money, 100,000 dollars. That's why, you know, remember, when I was a kid, remember the song, "Mother, mother, I am sick. Call the doctor, quick, quick, quick. Doctor, doctor, will I die? Ah, yes, my dear, and so will I." That's a reflection of being a human being. Sometimes people make mistakes, you know, but that doesn't mean that they should not be held accountable. That's why support, navigate, fund for these people that needs help, if they qualify for the program. Assist them with lawyers, because they might end up spending more, or losing their house, or their property, if the other party prevailed. Then they have to pay for the cost of the trial. Sometimes you have to help yourself, because I, I encounter it, like, because I was into walking even two hours. I don't get tired walking, and I was exposed to sun. I developed some rashes on my neck due to the heat of the sun. I scratched it. Then it was exacerbated by the smoke in, in Harmon. What I did is called the veteran affairs. I told them, oh, I need an appointment. They told me they will call me. They did not call me after two days. So I went to Cambridge, bought some medicine. It get worse. So what, what, what do I do? I went straight to the Naval Hospital Emergency. The one that saw me was, was not dermatologist. I told him, don't cure me. It is spreading all over my neck and my chest. And then he gave me three medicines. In three days, it's all gone. So how about if he don't cure me? Because that's not, he's not a dermatologist. So what can happen? You get, I even tried to get an appointment for dermatologist. They're going to see me in one month. So that's the problem that this bill will, will create. You know, this, this one is just easy problem, very easy, you know, especially that, there's just isolation cases, cases. The only problem is, they need funds. They need funds, they need help. And you can do it. You can do it, instead of bringing this aster to the people of Guam. Because if you will recall, you know, out of 50,000, 50,000 registered voter, only 35%. Even the number one voter, he only got 35%. If you base it on the people that voted, the one and two only get like 60%. Meaning, there's a lot of people that, that really don't support all of you. And we are all replaceable, but the doctors, it's hard to be replaced. And then you tell me that I am, I am biased because my sister is, is a doctor, and I also have a son that, with God's mercy, will become a doctor too. My beloved senators, you base it on my idea, on my opinion. You know, I'm not the one voting. Even these doctors, they don't have conflict of interest, because, because all you have to do is just listen. You'll be the one voting, not them. And remember, the doctors have accountability. The judges, they don't have accountability. They can make a ruling, then overturn by the higher court. They won't pay anything. They won't pay any damage. They get away with it. And they want it to remain that way. They want it to remain that way. No accountability. They don't pay for the cost of the damage by the plaintiff or the defendant that lost the case. You know, yeah, that's why I'm against this bill. Figure it out. It's your call. I will not beg you to, to pass this, or it's your call, or not to pass this. You know, we're all adults here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr.
I have to go, because I have to, I still have to feed my sister, even nighttime.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lisangan.
I went straight to the Naval Hospital Emergency. The one that saw me was not dermatologist. I told him, "Don't cure me. It's spreading all over my neck and my chest." And then he gave me three medicines. In three days, it's all gone. So how about if he don't cure me? Because he's not a dermatologist. So what's going to happen? I even tried to get an appointment for dermatologist. They're going to see me in one month. So that's the problem that this bill will create. You know, this one is just easy problem, very easy. Especially the isolation cases. The only problem is they need funds. They need funds, they need help. And you can do it. You can do it instead of bringing disaster to the people of Guam. Because if you will recall, you know, out of 50,000 registered voter, only 35%. Even the number one voter, he only got 35%. If you base it on the people that voted, the one and two only get like 60%. Meaning there's a lot of people that really don't support all of you. And we are all replaceable. But the doctors, it's hard to be replaced. And then you tell me that I am biased because my sister is a doctor and I also have a son that with God's mercy will become a doctor too. My beloved senators, you base it on my idea, on my opinion. I'm not the one voting. Even these doctors, they don't have conflict of interest. Because all you have to do is just listen. You'll be the one voting, not them. And remember, the doctors have accountability. The judges, they don't have accountability. They can make a ruling, then overturned by the higher court. They won't pay anything. They won't pay any damage. They get away with it. And they want it to remain that way. They want it to remain that way. No accountability. They don't pay for the cost of the damage by the plaintiff or the defendant that lost the case. You know? Yeah, that's why I'm against this bill. Figure it out. It's your call. I will not beg you to pass this or it's your call or not to pass this. We are all adults here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr.
I had to go because I had to, I still have to feed my sister even nighttime.
Thank you very much, Mr. Linsangan. Thank you for your patience. We can go now to someone else who was supposed to be on the last panel as well. Rosario Perez, virtual. Please proceed. Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
No problem. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity. It's not easy for the senators or the people who have joined us today to be here this long, so I'll do my best to keep this brief. Hafadee Chairperson and members of the Legislative Committee, my name is Rosario Perez and I am providing testimony on behalf of a women's group. I'll explain further. Sisus Maasi again for this opportunity to provide testimony. We are the Indigenous Chamorow Women's Association, Ihagan famalawan Guahan. We come before you all to express our support for Bill Number 112-36. There appear to be layers of complexities regarding Bill Number 112 that surely require careful consideration, possibly unknown to the layperson's comprehension of medical practice. Despite these complexities, we stand firmly in the support of the bill and its intentions to provide a more equitable means for the people of Guam to file medical malpractice claims. Especially, we support this bill due to its design for fair, impartial, and financially accessible methods for all members of the community who seek protection. We can imagine the financial burden on families seeking to have their claims considered. We can empathize that those already are burdened with the expenses of medical procedures. What more for those who can't afford the current arbitration process and have no other means to seek justice for an injury due to negligence, accidents, mistakes? This bill acknowledges and addresses the reality of the financial struggles of our low socioeconomic families. In addition to providing equal and due process for low socioeconomic families, we support the anticipated assisted outcomes that will aid our valued medical professionals by providing a vetting process to ensure mitigation of frivolous lawsuits while not negatively affecting the current standard of care that is being practiced. Ihagan famalawan's mission as an organization is to promote the social welfare of Guahan and her people. And two specific traditional Chamorow systems that we drive our work for this island are fatatau, to treat others with the utmost respect as a member of humanity and Inagweta, to be loving. Thank you to the legislative members who support this passage of Bill 112. We ask you all for your continued efforts in working toward a more fatatau and Inagweta community for the people of Guam. Undankuluna Sisus Maasi, kon respetu Ihagan famalawan Guahan.
Sisus Maasi, Ms. Perez. Next, we have Dr. Beeling. Just one second.
I'm Friedrich C. Beeling. I socially go by Chris, my middle name. Some people call me Dr. Chris. I'm a board-certified obstetrician and gynecologist. I have been a house physician, hospitalist in obstetrics and gynecology at Guam Memorial Hospital for over 10 years. I come here not in anger and not to complain. Honorable Speaker Talahi, I voted for you. I saw you as a powerful woman, highly qualified, showing strong, forward-looking leadership, dedicated to serve the people of Guam. That's why I wanted it. On my prepared ballot sheet, I gave every checkmark to a woman except for one male. I was hoping for a strong female caucus that would be dedicated to bring to Guam the bricks and mortar and the infrastructure and environment of care for our women in labor and our birthing mothers that is caring, comfortable, dignified, and up to modern American standards. Well, in response to recent headlines and social media posts, "Can doctors leave over malpractice? Are doctors threatening for political gain?", I feel compelled to respond. Can doctors leave from over-malpractice? Absolutely. Seen it, been there, done that. Are doctors threatening for political gain? I don't think so. It's not who we are. It's not what we are about. I share the concern of my colleagues that Bill 11236 will unleash a significant increase in malpractice claims that will divert and usurp substantial resources and money and manpower that are badly needed for patient care. I see with sadness and concern the buildup of a toxic cloud in the cloud, wafting across my screen regularly, spewing and disseminating vitriolic attacks at our profession and at individuals providing service to the public. Will doctors be leaving? In droves. When I was in private practice in Atlanta, Georgia, our Atlanta OB-GYN group at its peaks had six board-certified obstetricians. At one time, we were seven. At its peak, we delivered 120 babies a month. At one of the malpractice crisis points in Georgia, our group gave up obstetrics. Six doctors gave up delivering babies, practicing gynecology only. We were not alone. At our hospital, almost half of all providers stopped obstetrics. In the state of Georgia, about one-third of all obstetricians stopped providing prenatal care and delivering babies. The loss was real. We have wonderful midwives. In Georgia at the time, all obstetricians stopped employing midwives. No more. It was a major crisis. Small rural hospitals, think GMH, were hit the hardest. All of a sudden, they had no obstetricians. We have wonderful family doctors providing obstetrical care. There was not a single family physician left in the state of Georgia who would deliver babies. I remember it going through the papers when the last two standing gave it up. Sagwa Manyagu is a wonderful place. It has a special place in the hearts of mothers in Guam and the people of Guam. In the state of Georgia and neighboring Florida, all sagwa-like freestanding birthing centers closed, every single one of them. Dang those malpracticing midwives, really. Malpractice suits put them out of business. They became uninsurable. Doctors threatening for political gain? I clearly remember my own sentiments and those of my colleagues. Making a threat was the farthest from our minds. The prevailing reaction was not to threaten, but to withdraw into sadness and disappointment over lack of public and political support. Malpractice premiums skyrocketed. But financially, it was handled. It was the disillusionment that lingered. We had been naive. We had been used to trust our patients. Innocence and joy were gone. I clearly remember my own turning point. I had completed an emergency sedarian section and a higher was patient. I had followed her through her pregnancy. We had an excellent doctor-patient relationship. Something minor went wrong in the recovery room, I think it was about the patient's anticoagulation and a consultant. It was of no clinical consequence. But patient and patient's family sentiment immediately turned into hate and resentment. Nothing serious came of it. But I felt so quickly tossed from being the hero to being the villain. At a strictly emotional level, it was no longer worth it to me. I gave it up. I did not provide prenatal care and deliver a baby for about 15 years. I was happy just doing my major cancer surgery and tumor and this sort of thing. I have been blessed to experience the embrace, the warmth, the compassion, and the values of Chamorow culture and the culture of Guam. That toxic cloud there out in the cloud is completely un-Guam. This is not us. The proposed bill will not improve healthcare on Guam. Improvement of healthcare on our island will not come from vitriolic attacks, hurling accusations, seeding dissent, and spreading divisions. We have limited resources. Everybody knows that. Improvement of healthcare can only come when we as an island community come together and create an environment of care where all stakeholders feel safe, feel free of threats, acknowledged, and when we as a community make the best possible use of our limited resources. Let's see. Sorry. Forgive me to be cynical. The bill is not about actually improving patient care, but it impacts it greatly. It doesn't even pretend. It's about easier access and more money for litigations. Thank you for listening to me. I have to leave to see patients' questions to me, I think are immaterial, question the senators. I will quickly answer only one FAQ. Will I leave Guam if the bill passes? The answer is no. I love Guam. I love the people of Guam, but I will completely retire. Maybe as one constructive note, I think it would be very helpful if the Honorable House would consider an informed consent bill. Georgia had one that was very good. All the doctors hated it, but it was very good. And it gave a good framework for the doctors and for patients to sort of be guided and see a little framework what is expected of each party. And in that sense, I think it was very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Beeling. Dr. Deborah Swenna.
Half a Day. Thank you, senators, for this opportunity to share my testimony. My name is Deborah Swenna. I'm a board-certified OB-GYN, serving as the only OB-GYN currently at the Guam SDA clinic. And I've been there for the last year and a half. I came to Guam with no ties here, away from my family and friends, because I really, really wanted to serve women here and provide the best quality care I could for my patients. That's the only reason I came to Guam. I turned down job offers for hundreds of thousands of dollars more. It had no financial draw to come to Guam because I wanted to improve the lives and the health of my patients. My biggest concern, there's many, but my biggest one I wanted to focus on tonight about Bill 112 is that it will result in unintended consequences that will make patients, especially the poor, suffer and die. And I would feel responsible if I didn't warn you ahead of time that many people will be dying if Bill 112 passes. I'm not being overdramatic. I'm stating reality. This is due because many physicians, especially the already extremely limited subspecialists, will leave Ireland. What's ironic about Bill 112 is that it would backfire and actually hurt and kill especially the poor. Let me explain. I'm an OB-GYN, but I see uterine cancer patients often. Many of them cannot go off island to see a subspecialist, like I recommend, because they don't have a current passport, finances. They need family support as they recover from a major surgery and delays from insurance getting approval to go off island. In these cases, instead of letting them die on the island, we work together with multiple subspecialists to allow them to have life-saving surgery. Bill 112 must die, or these patients will die. Bill 112 not only affects the cancer patients, some of whom are as young as I am, fighting cancer that is treatable, curable with surgery, but it also significantly affects our obstetric patients. Dr. Harada, our subspecialist in maternal fetal medicine, will not be able to provide his services anymore. And this will significantly affect our patients, which are disproportionately high-risk obstetric patients. In Guam, we have some of the highest diabetes rates in the world. You may not know, but poorly controlled diabetes is associated with a 1 in 4 risk of being born with this extremely serious heart problem, something that would be life-threatening if wasn't treated immediately with surgery at time of delivery of the baby. But if Bill 112 passes, many doctors will leave Guam. And without our MFM specialists, we will not be able to do the fetal heart ultrasounds, which are medically recommended to detect these defects before birth. And what will result is babies will be born on island with these major heart anomalies all the time. And they very well may die because they can't afford the quarter-million-dollar flight to life-flight a baby to California where there's a pediatric cardiologist surgeon that can do the surgery. It's far cheaper to send the mother off island, but that requires early detection during labor. That requires having subspecialists. And that will not be possible if Bill 112 passes. The poor will not be able to afford that life-flight for their newborn. And so the baby will not survive. It is unrealistic to think that these diabetic mothers will leave the island for their entire pregnancy to have subspecialty care off island. As diabetic mothers that are pregnant typically would be seeing a high-risk OB doctor, but that's not available on a routine basis in Guam. I expect to see women my age with uterine cancer dying on our island due to a lack of providers being able to provide care for specialty care outside their typical practice. This will be your family, your friends dying. I expect that babies will also be dying due to lack of providers as well as maternal fetal medicine ultrasounds to detect serious complications before birth. Bill 112 isn't just going to drive away our providers that are already here. It will also drive away the very few subspecialists we already have on island. This is going to drive away not just bad doctors, but good doctors also. Malpractice insurance won't even be available to doctors if they want it. And even if it was available, it would not be affordable given the very low reimbursement rates that are available in Guam compared to the cost of the malpractice insurance. I personally would never practice without malpractice at any point in my life, even though I feel confident that I provide and exceed the standard of care for my patients. I can't blame doctors for leaving island, but the patients will be the ones that are left suffering unfortunately. And the ones that will suffer most are the poor and the middle class who can't afford to go off island to see the subspecialists that are no longer available in Guam. And unfortunately, there's a higher rate of patients with comorbidities, diabetes, high blood pressure, obesity, that makes the need for these subspecialties even greater in Guam compared to other locations. It's already difficult to recruit doctors to Guam due to the distance from family in the mainland, low reimbursement, high student debt, and other factors. But Bill 112 will make it even harder to recruit with the inability to have malpractice insurance making it next to impossible. Again, the patients will suffer. Everybody in Guam will suffer, but women and children will especially suffer due to the lack of care and providers leaving Ireland. Even more people will die from preventable, treatable causes if Bill 112 passes. So if you want to improve healthcare in Guam, please recruit the subspecialists. Don't drive them away. Bill 112 doesn't help patients and it doesn't help doctors. The only person that really wins is the lawyers because they have so much business. Bill 112 is not the solution. I'm Dr. Deborah Swenna, and I oppose Bill 112.
Thank you, doctor. Dahlia Sapato.
Hafadee, my name is Dahlia Sapalo. I am here to testify as the island's only nationally certified oncology nurse navigator and patient advocate. My job is to help navigate patients through their cancer journey to ensure that they receive their diagnosis and treatments in a safe, effective, and timely manner. Most cancer patients Most cancer patients can have their biopsies and subsequent treatments completed here on island. However, there are some types of cancer that do not have a subspecialist here on Guam, most notably pediatric oncology, neuro-oncology, renal, and gynecologic oncology. These patients must seek treatment off island. With our lack of subspecialists on island, our current medical providers have gone above and beyond to get a biopsy done here, thereby expediting the process. Patients make an informed decision to proceed, because the alternative to go off island just for a biopsy is not an option for a variety of reasons, be it financial hardship, childcare, loss of work, or urgency due to their symptoms. Bill 112 would be detrimental to access of care by hindering these medical providers from performing certain biopsy procedures, which would delay, which would cause a delay in care. As a patient advocate, it is my duty also to ensure that my patients' rights are respected. Therefore, if they feel that their health has been adversely affected by a medical provider's negligence, injury, or omission of care, I would work with them to find justice or resolution. Cancer treatments are already a costly burden, and having to pay additional costs for arbitration under the current law would cause further stress. However, not every bad outcome is due to malpractice, and there must be a pre-screening process to determine this. Although the cost of arbitration would be lifted, the patient would still have the burden of paying court and lawyer fees. And then at the end, if the court decides that the injury was not due to malpractice, the patient would have wasted their time and money, on top of all the money they've spent on their cancer treatments. I believe that the current law does need a reform, but Bill 112 is not the solution. Let's develop a bill together with doctors, nurses, and the community, and lawmakers, that would allow for an affordable pre-screening process that would ensure that patients have or don't have cause to file a malpractice claim. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Hernandez. Wait, please, yeah, please start again. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Therese Terlahi, Chairperson, Committee on Health, and the members of the Third and Sixth Legislature of Guam. Thank you for staying this late. I'm here to speak in behalf of the medical community as well, because it greatly impacts and potentially impacts our care to the community. We are in the middle of this pandemic. Physicians are the frontliners to help increase survival of this island, to care for the community, and please, we hope that you hear our voices as well. I read your statements in post-Guam dated June 30, 2021, that you are committed to consider all input, and that you have researched to find a good compromise to grant access to justice for all members of the community. We hear that there are some who have been impacted by malpractice, but you have also to hear the sides of the physicians. I'm a, I was trained in pediatrics at Beth Israel Medical Center in New York, and I also am trained in subspecialty of pediatric pulmonology, but I did outreach here in Guam for family reasons and because I like to be challenged. I also helped out as a pediatric hospitalist at GMH from mid-2009 until 2019, and when I started, there were a shortage of physicians, there's only one physician on call, and we're it. I'm the neonatologist, I'm the intensivist, I go to the emergency room for emergency life-threatening events for kids, and also answer to the emergencies at LND. I found practice here in Guam very challenging. GMH is a community hospital, and it's so isolated. Guam in itself is considered a federally underserved, federally underserved community. It's so isolated with so much limited resources, especially for neonatal and pediatric care. We physicians in the Department of Pediatrics try our best to stabilize patients who seek care, even though they're in the late spectrum of their illness. Sometimes, if they have been hypoxic or seek late care, sometimes it's hard to provide stability for them. They don't seek medical care early, because from what I've heard from patients is some of them don't have insurance, they don't have transportation to go to the clinic to seek preventive care, unable to go for early evaluation and management of their illness, so when they go to the emergency room, they're already at the end spectrum of disease. So that's difficult. Had we had the chance to treat them early in the disease, it would be easier to reverse the condition. But if they're in their end stage of the disease, sometimes their condition can be irreversible. And in this situation, then physicians can easily be blamed for the bad outcome of the case. We try to work with patients to educate them and work with them as a team. We advise them, we advise the parents of our young patients and adolescents how to help themselves improve their health through educational intervention at the clinic and also behavioral interventions. Example, diabetes. We don't have a pediatric endocrinologist on island, but we seek help from our adult endocrinologists, who are nice enough to oblige to our plea to help us manage these kids. Diabetes in itself is tricky, because physicians can only spend 30 minutes to an hour advising patients what to do, but majority of the treatment is at home, so we rely on these patients to treat themselves at home and follow the recommendations of physicians. Now, we also encounter patients who have severe status epilepticus, as we call it, where they're in a prolonged seizure episode because parents either ran out of medication or they don't have finances to buy the medication needed to stabilize their seizure. Now, if they have bad outcomes, if physicians, if, we can always be a clear target if the patient doesn't do well, even though they were brought to the emergency at their end spectrum of their condition. So we, I'm speaking today is because I want to reach out to the public as well, that there's a collective effort from physicians and patients to achieve optimal health and prevent complications. Compliance with prescribed medication and treatment plays a big role in health outcomes, and you are the committee of health, and preventive care is so important. It's important to have regular follow-up for health supervision. We encounter a lot of complications with non-adherence to prescribed treatment, like we, we, we admit patients with diabetes in the intensive care unit if they have diabetic ketoacidosis. Now, if diabetes is uncontrolled, it can lead to chronic renal failure, layer on requiring dialysis. If patients don't take their medications for seizures, they can have low oxygen in their brain and have complications of hypoxic encephalopathy or abnormalities of neurologic abnormalities. Guam is an underserved region with limited healthcare resources. The other civilian hospital has closed their pediatric and neonatal unit. So Guam is the only civilian hospital who can take care of critically ill pediatric patients. We are so very isolated that the standard of care cannot be always compared to the mainland U.S., where critically ill patients, example, babies who are born with congenital heart disease, or babies who are born with exposed intestines or omphalosia or neonatal seizures, are cared for in children's hospitals staffed with all pediatric subspecialists. And if born in the community hospital in the States, they can be easily transferred to the children's hospital via helicopter. Guam is unique, because we're so far away from these children's hospitals, and I've been involved in transfer of patients, because I'm a child advocate, I want them to do well in the hospital. But because of the limitation in Guam, parents have to wait for funding to afford transpacific off-island care, which may take weeks. Likewise, other standard of care medications is not available all the time. So we call our colleagues in the States on how we can best manage our patients, and they would recommend medications which are not even available here in Guam. Also, likewise said, there are some complicated births that happen that we need a certain gas called nitric oxide to stabilize a condition called primary pulmonary hypertension in children, which is not available in Guam. So much that we want them to do well, if you don't have the equipment or resources to stabilize them, they will have a bad outcome, and we can easily be blamed for that bad outcome, if the public doesn't know how difficult it is to practice here in Guam with all the limitations. We try our best to care for patients, and if they have unfavorable outcomes due to lack of life-saving medication and equipment, with the Bill 112-36, physicians can be easy targets of malpractice lawsuits, even if we work in dire situations where there's shortage of physicians to care for critically ill pediatric and newborn patients. If Bill 112-36 would repeal the Guam's Mandatory Malpractice Arbitration Act, this will be harmful to the medical community and the community we serve. Lawsuits will take precious time away from our time caring for patients in an otherwise underserved island, especially if the case is eventually found to be without merit or not valid, and if care was performed within acceptable island-specific standard of care. And I, before I came here, I tried to read the bill that you were proposing, that any claim for damages for any personal injury or death on account of alleged medical malpractice of a healthcare provider shall be submitted to the medical malpractice pre-trial screening pursuant to the terms of this chapter. This exposes a lot of physicians to lawsuits. Understand that some may be damaged by lawsuits, that is caused by malpractice, but what happens to those where there is no evidence to support the conclusion that the defendant or defendants failed to meet the applicable standard of care, meaning if it's, if it's not a valid case, and if there was no malpractice done. The other thing that I'm concerned about the bill is that without the expertise of the arbitration panel, this will be submitted directly to the Superior Court of Guam. So each and every case or complaint submitted, whether there's merit or not, will impact on the physician, because this has to be reported on the boards that we apply to and all the organizations we apply to. This will impact physicians who will plan to practice here in Guam, because it will expose them to litigation. It makes the practice here difficult in its sense that the resources are limited, at the same time exposing the physicians to litigations, whether there's merit or not. Without pre-screening cases with the three arbitration panel as indicated in the medical malpractice mandatory arbitration law, that you are going to repeal with this Bill 112-36. Physicians can be presented with lawsuits that may not always be valid, but will have lifetime, long-term consequences detrimental to the physicians needing to renew licenses to practice in another jurisdiction other than Guam, or even in Guam itself, they may have limited access or be limited to have credentials in the hospital they apply to. This will negatively affect young physicians and other subspecialists who plan to serve the underserved community here in Guam, or current subspecialists already in Guam, who will be limiting their scope of service due to more exposure to litigation. Bill 112-36 creates a litigious environment that can potentially disrupt provision of improved care in Guam, with shortage of physicians and subspecialists in Guam, and for us confronted with many complex cases, like what we said. There are some complex cases that pediatric, pediatric, pediatric diabetic patients, patients who have kidney failure requiring dialysis, children needing immune modulators to be stabilized because of their autoimmune disorders. Some of these services, we don't have subspecialists to do it, so we actually ask the help of adult specialists to help us care for these children. If, with this bill, we may need to seek care to a higher-level children's hospital in the U.S. mainland. Thus, it will be more expensive, it will be time away from school for the children, and also time away from the immediate families. I also want to reach out to the public as well, that it's, what I encounter as well when I was the hospitalist at GMH is, there are many moms, I don't know for what reason, who are high-risk, who don't seek prenatal care, and that adds to the complication, complexity of caring for these children, because they can have congenital heart disease, they have, you know, infants of diabetic moms, they are born high-risk because they're too large, and they end up to have emergency C-sections and have complications from that. They're too large to be born, and they become hypoxic, and they lose oxygen before they're being born. Now, if you have a neurologically devastated child, and you're the physician, with this bill, physicians can easily be blamed for that complication. So please consider, please hear us. This bill is not going to help medical care here in Guam. What we need to emphasize is preventive care, and educational intervention for, for the community to seek care early and have yearly health supervision to maintain optimal health, and not wait till the very last spectrum of their disease and have complications from that. If the arbitration law is too expensive for those who are affected by malpractice, is it possible to lower the fees and have it more accessible? So we also hear those who are affected by malpractice, if you think that the arbitration law is too expensive, then maybe we should have funds to help those who cannot afford it. Bill 112-36 is not going to help the healthcare of the island. It will drive away physicians, because it will expose us to litigations which may not be valid, and that will destroy us. It will be difficult for us to seek certification, and it's reportable to the National Pediatric National Data Bank. Imagine a physician, your child, studying medicine in the States and coming back here, starting a career, any complaint placed on them will be detrimental to their career, and their career will be destroyed forever. We're not ignoring patients who have had malpractice, but this is Bill 112-36, this is not the only solution. We can have a collective resolution to have, to find better ways to help these patients who had an unfortunate event of malpractice, but 112-36 will affect even those physicians who try their best to serve the island. In August, we will be losing our own neonatologist here on island, who will be expected to take care of these critically ill newborns. If they have a bad outcome, even though we try our best to stabilize these patients, we are ethically obliged to stabilize them, but if you don't have the specialists to help them, if you don't have the resources to treat these kids, they may have a bad outcome. Much that we want to provide standard of care, we cannot really match the standard of care in the States. Even the limit of viability cannot be matched. In the States, the viability is 23 weeks age of gestation. It cannot be applicable here in Guam. I already looked at the patients who we treated before, when we have shortage, when we didn't have a neonatologist, the limit of viability here The limit of viability here is 28 weeks and above. So if we have a bad outcome less than 27 weeks, and if there's someone who would research, oh, the standard of care is that viability is 23 weeks. The community might misunderstand that and may think that we may not be providing standard of care. But they have to understand that we have limited resources here in Guam. Standard of care cannot be matched with the U.S. mainland because we don't have subspecialists available here. The outcome of patient also depends on them, on how well they treat themselves at home and how they're, to seek health supervision. Thank you for allowing me to testify tonight. When we don't have subspecialists on island, it's not really easy to transport critically ill patients to a coronary care hospital via helicopter because we're too far away. So we're it. We'll be the ones to take care of these children. We cannot have a good outcome all the time, but we try our best to stabilize them. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak to you tonight, even though it's very late. Please help us so we can continue to provide care and lifelong commitment to improve our care for our patients. We urge you to reconsider not to repeal the arbitration law and instead make it more affordable to those who cannot afford it. I'm Dr. Mary Elizabeth Hernandez, and I oppose Bill 112-36.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. Dr. Karen Song.
Yes, just for the record, I actually graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Pharmacy, so you can call me Karen. My name is Karen Song. I'm a pharmacist. Sorry, I'm getting a little emotional here. I'm usually not good at public speaking. I don't come to these kind of sessions, but I felt that compelled to come today. I've called Guam home for over 50 years. I was raised here. I wasn't born here, but I was raised here. When I left after high school to college, going on that plane, I already missed home. As soon as I was done with my degree, I came straight home. So the only home I know is Guam. And why I mention that is last year, I was able to meet some of the senators during the pandemic. And because I'm a pharmacist, several leaders turned to me for information about medicine, drugs, and availability, you know, the cure, the treatment. We, we did, it was such an unknown moment for all of us at the beginning of the pandemic. And so when they sought out information for me as a pharmacist and the knowledge that I had, we were able to share information in hopes of looking for something to protect our community, to look for a light in the end of the tunnel of how can we stay safe and get out of this public health emergency? And so one thing I was hopeful during the initial months of the pandemic was I met a wonderful public servant who wanted to help our community. And I, throughout my entire career and my life, and I've been practicing for over 25 years here, have always had the desire and the call to serve the community. And so the, the feeling that I had gave me hope. I said, with the leadership of the senators and with the leadership of the governor and everybody else, I said, wow, we can make it out of this. And that's the feeling I had. And so I would like to implore with you today that although the intent of the bill, I, I don't think any of us who are here tonight disagree that anyone who has suffered medical malpractice injury should rightly get justice and reparation. I don't think we question that whatsoever. But I do believe that to find a fair and balanced solution for all parties involved, and I think the word here is ALL. There are so many aspects and perspectives that have been shared as a legislator, as a community servant, as a healthcare worker, as a patient, as a family member, a member of the community has been expressed. But I believe in all of us that we can come together and try to find a fair and balanced solution for all parties involved. I do not believe it's Bill 112. I would like to continue to serve my community and the people of this island in working with whomever we need to, bringing our expertise, you as public servants, me as a healthcare perspective, and everybody else, including our community. I would love to hear from everybody as to what they think is the solution. And so we can all put it on the table and see what will be good for Guam. And I'm hopeful. So thank you for giving me this opportunity and staying late.
Thank you very much, Ms. Song. And thank you again to all members of the panel. And I think you hit the nail right on the head. This is what these hearings are for, is to hear from everyone. And we do want to continue that. I'm additionally open for any additional discussions that you would like to have. And we are going to have to end this hearing. Unfortunately, there were so many people that had to leave. They just couldn't stay any longer, and I apologize for that. I was afraid it's going to be very long. But so we do have another hearing on July 12, 5:00 p.m. We may have to set another hearing time in July, so I'm working on a date for that because we do have budget coming up. But I do want to thank my colleagues who are here and recognize them. Senator Tai Te Gui, Senator Perez, Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Shelton, Senator Moylan, and Senator Torres. Thank you again, colleagues, for being here with us. Normally, after every panel, we allow the senators to ask questions and, and we were not allowed, we were not able to do that with the last panel, and I'm afraid we're not going to be able to do that with this panel. But we do have all your testimony. If you submit anything in writing that you have not submitted yet, we will also make that all available to all senators and all the public. It will be uploaded on my website, and all the senators will have copies of everything that you have said. And so I very much want to thank you for the suggestions. I would like to discuss those more with you. And I would like to discuss, I mean, I totally agree with all of you regarding the seeming hostile environment. And that is not at all what this bill was intended to do. It's, it's really to address one problem. And that, yeah. And I think we need to really ensure our communications are very clear because I can hear from some of the testimony that we, we are not all even on the same page as to the facts. So we will need to do that and make sure that we can all interpret the bill fairly and make sure that, that then, you know, I think, for example, we hear a lot of testimony tonight regarding making affordable pretrial screening or cheaper arbitration. And that's exactly what this bill is trying to do. It's trying to make options of affordable arbitration mediation. And if none of those, the parties can't agree to either of them, then we're going to go to another pretrial screening and to ensure that the medical community has pretrial screening and not to remove that types of protection and not to require that they go directly to court. And in fact, the bill also, yeah, extends to include the findings of the medical licensing board. And this is, this is different. And it also includes confidentiality throughout this entire period so that reputations are not destroyed while we, we end up finding it's just a frivolous claim. And that by no means does this bill remove every barrier for patients to seek justice. It can't remove every barrier because the law, the legal system exists. You know, we can't change that. We're changing the pretrial, what we do pretrial. And that's, that's what we're trying to do here. So I'm hoping that we can come to common ground and that we can, I'm going to say, there was some testimony regarding malpractice insurance will not be covered after this bill if we do what they're currently doing. And so I really need to get to the bottom of that because if malpractice is covering you now, I'd like to know why it can't cover you after this bill is passed because the standard of care is exactly the same. And so I know my colleagues have many, many questions. And, but I am very sorry. I think we're going to just have to end this hearing because it's 10:40. And I will allow my colleagues to, I don't know, I'm going to have to try to find a way for us to have a dialogue. So we're going to probably have to just have more roundtables with maybe smaller panels or groups or, or something because I know they have questions and they have lots of things to say as well. But we have exceeded 10:00 p.m., which I did not want to do because when we are in session, we are prohibited from going beyond 10:00 p.m. And so I'm just feeling a little bad about that, that I don't, I don't want to go any further. And I, I'm so sorry that you had to be here this late, that it's late, but I thank you so much for dedicating your time to be here, for all of those that testified tonight, for sharing your stories, your tragedies, for sharing your resumes, your skills, and, and your dedication to the people of Guam. I think that's what we all have in common, so I want to thank you very, very much. And I do believe we can, we can find a common ground. I'm not, I've not lost hope on that, so I want to thank you so much. Thank you for listening to my colleagues.